Voting on the amendments to forty six heads. We will now proceed to the third session to deal with the remaining proceedings. The committee will proceed to a joint debate. According to rules sixty eight and sixty nine of the rules of procedures. The debate includes the question, the sums up the forty four heads to which the amendments were negatived, standing part of the schedule. And the increased sums for heads one seventy and one seven three, standing part of this schedule. Class one, standing part of the bill. And a consequential amendment to the long title proposed by the financial secretary. After the passage of the consequential amendments to the schedule and class two. Members may also indicate whether they support the bill as a whole to this debate. After the joint debate, the committee will vote on the question put, including the sums for the head standing part of the schedule. The financial secretary consequential amendments and the schedule and the classes standing part of the bill. Then the council will resume and deal with the motion that the report that was made in the committee of the whole council be adopted. And the motion on the third reading. Members may now proceed to the joint debate. Doctor K K Kwok. And Chairman. This is the first budget unveiled by the new administration. And with over a hundred thirty billion dollars in surplus, it may reach as high at one hundred fifty billion dollars. And compared to the, like the same budget in the past, the excessive surplus is not used to help those with different needs in our society. And for the most disadvantaged. Whether it's waiting for the elderly, um, home care services, for home care services. And those in the hospitals. Waiting for the expensive, um, anti-cancer medication and those for long-term illnesses and for those living in subdivided units. And industrial buildings, um, bearing to risk of higher fire hazard and yet have no choice but to live there. And this budget may have with a surplus of a hundred fifty billion dollars. And is adopt the same practice of past administration of being short sighted of no principles, no goals. We can see that the reserve has hit one trillion. With as high as eleven trillion. So we know that, um, there was an S, S because surplus increased by one hundred billion. Before Mr. Paul Chan and Carrie Lam assume office, you heard from them. They've criticized the previous financial secretary, Mr. John Chung. That how he lacked the fiscal philosophy, they're not spending where money is, where it should be. So what is doing now is even more, so you talk more outrageous. So at first, they said with no claim handout, but only to do so afterwards. However, the manner for the handouts is much criticized with over three hundred million administrative expenses. A lot of disadvantaged groups and those waiting for different services. This three hundred million is a lot of money to them. This budget had not much much to talk about. You, you criticize the previous FS John Chung. On how he miscalculated the surplus and it being, being, being the miser. How much better is actually Paul Chan actually is? It's just pot calling the kettle black. Not only is this. And most of the measures are just really, um, small. And minor measures, for example, free tickets from Ocean Park. This is a joke. We're sitting on such a huge estimated surplus and I'm spending. We can spend, um, hundreds of billion dollars. Um, to, um, address a major imbalances and to improve services and yet won't do that. And for new, the government to have a lot of new governing philosophy. If it can be manifested in a budget, I will be surprised. It seems that, um, it's not doing as well as the predecessor. The previous term government had deceived a lot. Hong Kong people claiming to offer universal retirement protection and this term government. Is tried not to do at all. Of all the, um, bells and whistles, uh, still, still serving in this administration. Like Matthew Chang, Carrie Lam, um, even got promoted. They are rather, um, shameless at which hand and look the other way. So looking at this bad rotten apples budget, how can we support this? I found this difficult. And for the, um, waiving of a D, uh, DSE examination fees have, uh, led to a mess. And seem to attract a lot, uh, the busy bodies and the world claimed that many mainland students will take advantage of this free examination arrangement to take the, the DSEs. It's hard to claim, claim, claim that, um, this is something could be done by the, um, governing elite who have over three decades of public service experience. And once again. They will build more infrastructure. Because they will benefit a lot of consortiums.
I said in the debate earlier that, um, when we see this floating artificial islands on, of the Hong Kong Jia Macau Bridge, still the government continues to fund the project. So this project is, and then the incinerators, they are letting state-owned enterprises to build incinerators. So that's why the government has to continue to build infrastructure. We're going to spend over a hundred million billion dollars for our recommendation because they need to contribute money. Uh, to someone. And so they're going to have more white elephant projects. What about the public? Do they get to vote for the chief executive? So we can just ignore them. The, the general public have not, cannot vote for the chief executives. Only the rich and powerful can do that. You know, the big businesses, uh, and the state-owned enterprises. Which, um, support the government, they are here. So that's why Carrie Lam and Paul Chan know what they're doing. They know who their masters are. Education is, um, failure. We're not even. We haven't even finished talking about, um, the brainwashing national education. And then here we're talking about, um, changing, you know, um, um, changing history. It's, it's not the Japanese who would do it. You know, Hong Kong being at the southern part of China, that's considered wrong. And the return of sovereignty is considered wrong. What is this government doing here? And the so-called, um, increase in spending on education. Well, it actually leads to no, nothing being done. There are no additional places, universities. Is there any support for special education needs? Well, yes, they'll give you a bit. And that's it. But many of such help won't even reach the schools. Because there's a nine-month wait for assessment. And if someone is lucky, maybe then he'll get a referral to go to a child psychiatric service. Three years, there's a wait of three years. And then maybe they will take a look at you. So three months plus nine months. It's longer than the Japanese occupation of three years and eight months. So in that three years and nine months. Um, the opportunities missed to help these children. So these children become losers in schools and at home, they probably, um, often, um, hit by their parents or scolded by the parents. So this government, what does it lack? It is so poor, it has only cash left. It has no vision. It sets no goals. Housing, land. Well, that's where the government does brilliantly. It just shifts the responsibility or passes the buck to the task force on land supply, which is just, um, you know, um, a mix of members drawn from different sectors. And so this, by doing so, the government could allow properties to suffer. The government has thousands of hectares of land at hand, but it says it doesn't know what to do to provide land supply. And then, then, then the government says, the Carrie Lam says that they can't resume land because people may take the government to court. But when the government disqualified members of this council, were they ever afraid of being taken to court? No, of course not. The Department of Justice has become a political tool of the government to suppress people. Now, Mr. Kevin Young is here. One of you were here yesterday. Dr. Chen Chong Tai mentioned a four million dollar app for, um, um, Residence Welfare Association for an app on the age-stage fitness exercise. If that's not transfer of interest, what is? And then there are elderly people not getting food, not getting a place in residential homes. And now you pay this welfare association four million dollars to do an app on exercise. And then we see there are various funds, environments and conservation fund, um, innovation technology fund and so on. And the money goes to all these, um, pro-establishment groups. Who, which are, which are totally irrelevant. So you might as well just call this the vote rigging fund because that's the whole aim really. So you must name it right. And then the secretary won't have to come up with all sorts of, of funds. And then, then the secretary say, well, this has actually is about innovation and technology. Just yesterday, it was reported in news that, um, uh, the whole email systems were set was, um, project was given to a mainland company that's not at all known. So why don't you let mainland companies run the telephone network as well? Then you don't even need to, um, make effort to keep surveillance on our cause. You know, because already on the mainland, there are such systems. So might as well pass on all government information to the mainland. What are we seeing? We think Hong Kong is moving towards a poorer governance. The budget is supposed to be used for, um, writing and fairness in society. There are disadvantaged groups waiting for medication services, um, outpatient clinic services, uh, school places, elderly home places and so on. The budget is supposed to help them, but what do we get now? We just see various band-aid measures. Everything is one-off. And then you just earmark funds for this and that, and that's it. Now, uh, before they criticize John Chung for earmarking fifty billion dollars for the healthcare reform. And where's that money gone? Ten billion dollars has gone to the hospital authority for the so-called public-private collaboration. And then some money went to the Hong Kong U private hospitals. But then the public hospitals don't have resources. So the government is not helping the public. Instead, it's helping the Chinese university, not the Hong Kong university, to start a private hospital. Fifty billion dollars, that's where the fifty billion is gone. We asked the government to set up fund for the purchase of expensive drugs. No, we don't get it. And then we asked for services for children with learning difficulties, either those with, um, attention deficiency or hyperactivity and so on. They need help, but the government just won't do anything. So what's the government doing here to help the public? And there's more fanfare recently. The DAB, or rather the, um, um, Council for Social Service, uh, has, um, he did government's call to work with Uncle Four. Who gave them a piece of land. Now there are hundred thirty-three hundred thousand people waiting for public housing. The government is sitting on, uh, thousands of hectares of land. And then there is this project just to provide a few hundred units and they think it's a big deal. So they just try to shift our attention and they try to get money for the project. We have, um, tens of billions of dollars of white elephant project. Even if that's shifting of the dollarses, no one cares. When we asked the government, the government said, well, no, that's not a problem. The mainland engineers said that's not a problem, so that's not going to be a problem. And what happened? What if in future something happens? Who cares? Because those officials would have been long gone. And it cost ninety billion dollars to build a higher-speed rail, but there's derailment. So what's going on here? Hong Kong people are in, um, plight, but the government is not doing anything. We're waiting, originally, we wanted the government to, uh, come up with a new fiscal philosopher. That's what philosophy, that's what Carrie Lam said. And so what kind of new fiscal philosophy are we talking about here? All the officials here, including Paul Chang, Carrie Lam, they don't feel shame at all. They are actually talking about something old, there's nothing new at all. But still they're sitting here, um, getting over several billion dollars of wages and, but then, you know, um, you, you can look at the popularity rating and you see how Hong Kong people would abandon you. And so with these remarks, I oppose the budget. Mr. Wuchihai. Mr. Chairman, this is the budget. And since the return of sovereignty, what we, the reception of sovereignty, what we don't see is a fiscal philosophy in the budget. What do we mean? That means we need to look at the economy of Hong Kong. And in terms of revenue and expenditure, we have to consider how things develop. It's been over a decade. Now people name it a structural surplus, that's what we have. Every year. We have a surplus that far exceeded the projections of the financial secretary. And why did that happen? I wonder if the FS has ever given serious thought to that. Of course, um, there's no crystal ball when it comes to the budget. The FS would only have regard to historical data and then project the revenue that may be collected in the coming year. If in that coming year, it so happens, um, then there's a vibrant stock market. And property market, so there's an expected stamp duty revenue. Then it may not be in the original estimate. And also it may be difficult to assess possible economic changes. And now this year, originally, we had, um, a surplus forecast of, um, thirteen something billion dollars, but now may, a hundred and thirty billion dollars, but now uh, the, the surplus might be a hundred and seventy billion dollars. So then we have to ask the question, how are we going to make use of our surplus? In the past days of debate on the budget, many members said this. The government is sitting on a large sum of money, it's not using it. It won't consider how to use it. And that's exactly the problem. The Democratic Party told the financial secretary that, um, he should use the surplus to deal with longstanding problems in the community. Resources should be set aside for the relevant tasks. Well, he's done some of those tasks, for example. And there's three hundred billion dollars for another four thousand hospital beds. But then there are still many problems there. We know about those problems, nothing is being done about them. For example, when I, uh, talked to the financial secretary, I said that, um, now Dr. Law Chi Kwan mentioned four hundred fifty-eight residential care homes for the elderly. When will we be building those homes? Where do we get the money? It's not just about money and hardware. What about the policy support and talent training? Land resources. What do we do to take these projects forward? So often it depends on the FS to show his commitment in the budget. That is, we need to tackle the issue of elderly care home service, but unfortunately, there's nothing in the budget. Now, Dr. Law Chi Kwan said, now the problem is not to do with money. It's a problem of insufficient manpower and land. So it's a bottleneck that cannot be resolved. Well, I don't know, maybe, I don't know enough about the operation of the government, but I would think. Well, you are the government. And the government thus have some sort of planned economy arrangement. That means you need to give clear directions to different departments, not just the Labor and Welfare Bureau. So their support for you, for example, the, um, Education Bureau will consider manpower, uh, training and planning. And then the Development Bureau will consider land supply. So it's to make sure that social welfare department won't just be telling us different story. Um, maybe the social welfare department does not have the necessary recurrent expenditure. They dare not answer it, is, is, could that be a reason? Even though they give the excuse that other departments are not giving them land or whatever. But I think this is a serious problem. And I don't see you doing anything on these issues and I find it disappointing.
This is not something that just came overnight. So this is a phenomenon that we have seen in our society and is a problem, as stated by the secretary himself. And yet, no specific response has been made by the administration in terms of how this problem can be tackled. And in terms of primary health care in our community. Indeed, for so many years, the administration has been saying that it attaches a lot of importance to primary health care. Well, in the nineties, we had the first Rainbow Report. And then once every ten years, they'd say that they'd be improving primary health care. And yet in terms of resources, have you done anything about it? And if you do not put in more resources, then, well, for Department of Health, which is supposed to be responsible for that, to what extent can it do more? And for primary health care, a very important part of it is outpatient clinic. And yet, uh, the entire funding has been given to the hospital authorities. So with, with regard to this, does it show that the administration has not been attaching enough importance to this very important area of primary health care? I've been telling the secretary that, what is your attitude? I've asked you to put ten billion dollars as seed money so that we can kick-start this. Because we do believe that prevention is better than cure. If we can do it early, if we can make sure that the entire community can have better health checks, so that they can do it early to find out if they have any problems or health problems, then it can be preemptive. We'll be able to save a lot of, um, healthcare spending. And yet I haven't seen the bureau director, um, do this at all. Apparently you don't have the energy, um, or effort put into this. So this is what we have seen from the budget, is a phenomenon. Similarly, expensive medication or drugs. Well, even for many from the middle class, they are very worried when they are sick. Because once they are sick, once they see the diagnosis and also the medication list, we can see that many friends around us because of their condition, they might have to spend their entire fortune on medication. Even if they are pretty well off, they would still have to spend their entire fortune on treatment and medication and so on. So given the surplus that we have, should we have done something to help them? In particular, when you look at the drug list for the particularly expensive drugs, so that they do not have to worry about that. I think this is the, um, financial philosophy that we should have adopted. But have you done anything at all? Well, in this year's budget. We have been asking the administration and the financial secretary to try your best to put your money at, um, long-term planning. Honestly, if we have, um, a surplus and if the administration says that, well, despite the surplus, I'm not going to give out candies, I'll try to make sure that there'll be more even distribution of wealth in our, in our community, then we'll be prepared to support it. Because we can do two things. One, the money can be used to support the entire government's operation, that's only right. But then if there is a surplus, if you have charged people too much money. Then if you think that the way that we charge them should be changed or modified, this is something for the future. And yet in this year's budget, I think you're partially dealt with that, you've taken on both our views. That is, you'll be broadening the tax base and in many areas, taxpayers, in the long run, in terms of their tax expenditure, uh, there might be some savings. Or to a certain extent. That might be able to, um, fill in the gaps because of inflation that might have, um, uh, brought about this inflation-related tax. So the administration is saying that, okay, we have overcharged the taxpayers, that's why through the tax rebate, through the, uh, different, uh, uh, tax tiers and so on, uh, you can do something about it. And yet, in the past, the civil servants, uh, used to think that we should not make long-term commitments. And therefore, whenever we have a windfall, we'll just give it out. All right, that's fine. If it's just a one-off expenditure and that would also avoid making long-term commitments. I think that's also part of, um, uh, your dereliction of duty. Because as an official responsible for making use of our funds, you're responsible for monitoring how the money comes in and the money is spent. And if there is a windfall, what are you going to do about it? You should have come up with a system to cope with such situation where there is a sudden windfall. What are you going to do about it? Well, in Hong Kong, we, um, have been lucky enough that in a sense that we have close to a thousand billion dollars in our reserve. And even for the dividends that we are giving out, we're talking about close to ten billion dollars. And we can be more targeted so that we'll be able to face up to some of the problems that the entire community is facing. I think that's very important, that's part of the philosophy. But I'm afraid you haven't really done your job properly. Despite the fact that we have a lot of criticisms about this budget, we feel that there are a lot of inadequacies. But then financial secretary, you have done something very important. That is, when you look at the account book, when you see that some three million, uh, workers or salarymen in Hong Kong originally. When you try to, uh, introduce the relief measures, once you found out that they'd been ignored, you decided to take on board a comment and some might be criticizing you for that. But then I think we do have the responsibility to come forward to say that, well, you should have, you should draw a line and we suggested six thousand dollars. But then the administration subsequently decided that four thousand would be more appropriate. But then for those who have not been able to benefit from this year's budget, they'll be able to get four thousand dollars as a top-up. And of course. For any such measures. That would incur administrative costs because, um, there is no free lunch in this world. And yet in the process, you're willing to listen to comments from the community. And as a result of that, for those who have been neglected in this budget, and we are talking about some fifty percent of the population and they'd be included. And I think we need to, um, recognize that, but then on the whole, the DP is of the view that the FS still owes the entire community a more important task that you should have done. That is, under your governance, what's your fiscal philosophy? And that would also have to cover several areas. One is about how you view our financial surplus. What's the role and function to be played by it and to what extent is it adequate? So that you'll be, uh, rest assured that we'll be able to cope with any source of attacks or blows that we might encounter. And second, you would also have to come out and tell us. If our revenue is so volatile, well, given the fact that the revenue can fluctuate, instead of coming to us, uh, every year as to how Every year as to how you should be dealing with it, why don't you just tell the community? Even if there is a surplus, it should have been placed in a community. So that we'll be able to resolve some of the problems that everybody would like to see resolved. That should be a better approach. So it's not, well, even if that's the process of this redistribution of wealth. I think if you can have a formula, so so that, well, if the surplus is below a certain level. Then twenty, thirty percent will have to be given out so that you'll be able to share the fruits of success with everyone. I think that would be more simple, so that everybody would be able to benefit from it. So I think that's a simple approach. But the problem is, well, as the Financial Secretary. Do you have the determination to tell the community that even if you're not able to do it this year? Then in the future, you'll be moving in that direction. In particular, what's more important is that you will have to tell us that you do have the resolve to have or to make a breakthrough. In particular, under the civil service system, well, you've been giving us the impression that even if there is any windfall or surplus. That should not have been made a long-term commitment to the community because you have no idea as to what's going to happen. In the long term, whether or not you'll be able to sustain it if it's turned into a recurrent expenditure. But then you will have to think about it. Well, for the non-recurrent revenue, that can be, it can be used on a recurrent basis, or else there would be a lot of controversy. For example, we've been talking about the offsetting mechanism under the M P F system. And if you had, you've had a huge surplus, then you could have used it for that purpose. So that's one of the ways out. So we abstain from the vote. Next, Mister Ray Chen. Thank you, Madam Deputy. Madam Deputy, well, since the announcement of the budget in end of February is almost two and a half months now. And for the Hong Kong community, they have very strong views about this budget, and they have very strong emotional response. And for those that are a bit in contact with me, including the supporters of the Pro-Establishment Camp. Most of them are very critical about this budget. But however bad this budget is. It's expected that by today, it's going to be passed. With the support of the Pro-Establishment Camp and under the very sophisticated arrangement by the President, given this framework. It will be passed, it will be a plain sale. So whatever happens, it's going to be passed, no matter what. So under these circumstances. The administration simply does not have any pressure or any responsibility to come up with a piece of good job. Or it doesn't have any pressure to come up with a better budget every year. Well, this year is the first time when I met with the Financial Secretary to express my views on the budget. Because in the past, very often, they'd conduct joint consultation on both the budget and the policy address. Given the fact that C Y L will be present, when I met John Chung, I would not be going. But this, so this year, both myself and People's Power's stance is very clear. Well, I would not be tearing this up in the past after several budget. So this is the way that we've been doing. So we've been striving for this to be done. It's not the only thing that we'd like the administration to do. But then, we think that there should be. A rebate of a certain amount of money to everybody in the community. When we advocate for this, the reason why we think that there should be a direct cash back for everyone. We think that is the fairest way. Because under our proper, under our publicity and so on, more and more people are becoming or becoming. Are getting to understand this, or even just Per Zhang, the former president, has written several articles to support our suggestion. Well, we've been saying this since several years ago. But then, while I'm speaking, I'd like to say this on behalf of some members of the public. So they've asked me to say this on their behalf. In fact, that's what many people think. And they'd like to share this with the Financial Secretary. They'd like to go after the F S on this. Well, last year, when we looked at the budget, well, you talk about the budgeted or the estimated surplus is sixteen point four billion dollars. But then by the time when this budget was printed. The estimated budget was a hundred and thirty-eight billion dollars by end of April. When you properly announced the outturn forecast. Is a hundred and forty-eight point nine billion dollars, comparing with sixteen point four billion dollars. It's underestimating by a hundred, by a hundred billion plus. So if it's to be divided by the seven million people in Hong Kong, then you're actually owing everybody at least eighteen thousand dollars. And of course, for the eighteen thousand dollars that you owe each and every citizen in Hong Kong. We are not asking you to give them, give it back to every citizen right away. But then, given the fact that for this amount of money, I'm not like, I do not agree with what Mister Wuchihua said, that it's something from heaven. Well, in fact, we have to pay a price for that. There is a price attached to it. We talk about land premium and also stamp duty is a windfall. Number one, it's not going to be given back to the community directly. And also with high or escalating property prices, everything, or all the prices will go up. So even having a meal or dining out would be more costly. So I'd rather that property prices would come down so that everything would be cheap, so that there would be no cash back and so on. There'll be no handout. All right, we'd be envying Macau citizens because there's a handout every year by the Macau government. And of course, you're distributing it, you're actually giving handouts to those who have properties. You're actually giving handouts to people who are highly paid and who have high positions. That's the reason why we are criticizing you, because the distribution is uneven. All right, I'd not be applying for C S S A. Well, that's according to some citizens. Well, they would be eligible because they are already over sixty-five. If they do not work, then they'd be eligible. Well, for those who are over sixty-five, some would, some would rather work than getting C S S A. So when they see that they'd be getting two extra months of payment, then how can they feel comfortable about it? So in the past, indeed, the administration tried to take the easy way out. And they thought that, all right, if we had a surplus, then we just give everybody a handout. So that we rebate in terms of profit tax or salaries tax or even a rental cut for all public housing tenants. But then if you just do this, you will always be neglecting a group of people. On this occasion, you also admitted that you've omitted some people.
If you decided to offer universal handouts, then there will be less discontent. So, well, I talk about universal handouts. It seems that what everybody having shared. So it's like analogy raining because everyone would stand to benefit. So this, you are praying to the gods for blessings for for the government and the citizens' relationship. That's not how public finance should work. So for the eighteen thousand dollars per capita of surplus, if you tell it, how do we plan to utilize it? Instead of putting aside in your peggy bank. Okay, just politically incorrect. So if we do the math. And for the projected surplus of the one hundred and thirty-two point five billion dollars, it'd be shared with everyone. So when it gets to one hundred and forty-eight point nine, you actually revise your budget. Well, you say adjust according to the sum. Of course, you wouldn't do that. My Finance Secretary, I wish to congratulate you sincerely. Does your amendments. Back then, when John Chung offered for this amendment for the six thousand dollar handouts, the Democratic Party wouldn't offer the support. They would vote abstain. Today, the pro-Democratic camp would agree to the amendment, vote in favor of the agreement, except me and Doctor Chen Chong Tai. And Mister Michael Tian objected. Why six or seven years ago, they voted abstentions? And now that they simply surrendered or they're afraid that if they vote exemption, they would, they would because of not supporting the handouts. So nobody would dare to to object to the handouts. So some of the members are rather adamant of their opinions. So when meeting the Finance Secretary, even within our sector, not everyone agreed my views. So I simply laid out my views clearly to the Finance Secretary. In the next two years. I hope the upcoming budget should not be adopt the wrong practices from the past. So the past mistakes include, or the bad habits include, let's say, a conservative or a wild estimate. As slight deficit and then with a huge surplus, and now they have to project a small surplus, which turns out to be a big surplus. Which is described as a happy problem. But you thought you have a small deficit and turn out to have a big surplus to make everyone happy. I forgot which official said that, don't you wish for the other way around? So do you want me to predict a huge surplus and turning into a minor surplus for a. Doll, a major surplus turning into a major deficit, that would be a subject, that's simply. A bad practice. So you might be estimating a small surplus this year and turn out to be a huge one. And having a huge surplus, you will need to come with ways to spend it. Another bad practice. That you have prepared either way. First, you may not offer any handouts, just put, lock it in your cabinet, and you just unveil your budget. And to gauge the public sentiment. I think that all members. Support the, well, I think those different across the camps and members can claim credit. If we just blindly holding for the government, even if we cast a filibuster, we're not able to force the government hand. To come with this cash handout scheme, whether it's good or not, that does another matter. So we can all claim credit for this. But I'm afraid that it will happen year after year from now on. So you unveil the budget and to see how much the opposition is here. If there's strong opposition. Then it will come with a supplementary amendment. So if you continue service F S next year. I hope you can avoid doing that. So we may form a vicious cycle that we all criticize you first. So they will call a wide offices and complaining. And then we'll then force you to come up with a enhanced budgets. So why bother? So it's actually a good thing to hand up money. So if you just change your mindset, probably quite difficult to do. For those who think handout is a wasted money, which you could spend the money to iPhones or trips to Japan. For those public, so it's very difficult to change their mindset on this. The Finance Secretary claim, claim that you only criticize the budget. However, there are actually good measures. Inside it, but not being appreciated. Well, I'm just speculating. This could be, it couldn't possibly be all bad. There had to be good policies. For example, the waiver exam fees, I think, is a good measure for the beneficial to the public. However, at the end, the uneven distribution of the economic gains. That leaving, we have no room to discuss the actual contents of the budget. With remaining time, I want to say about that since we're sitting on such a huge surplus. It would undertake bigger commitment. I criticized Johnson back then. Why accusing him of being a miser? It's just about that, as seen, we reached that we expected disasters or catastrophe two or three years ahead. So we have to be careful with the money. Now, two to three years on, we didn't have, nothing happened, and we have even more money. So I borrow from the dreams of the red chambers, like low, 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 enter the brick house, and then who become the butler. They thought the poor relatives came to borrow money. So to tell them, don't be deceived by all this glamour and opulence, that we actually have a lot of expenses and a lot of mouths to feed. That we're just making our ends meet. I think this how, with government mentality. You're sitting on one thousand billion of reserves. And it claims that we have to prepare for the rainy days and so on. Well, is the public convinced? And are your actions consistent? For a hundred acting president claimed that for this young old, for the sixty to sixty-five. Can you help those group of people? And when Doctor Law speak of this, he may be quite angry. If the long hair is here, he would have hurled things at him. And now that our lifespan is getting longer. Do not consider setting an age limit. And the others, he claimed, don't force me to raise it to sixty-five. I'm actually adjusted upwards. I will raise it up to seventy-five or eighty to qualify for old age allowance. So from the scientific angle, he couldn't be totally wrong. However, in point of the, the public governance. When you're considering all this wealth, you should. I'm able to let the public share the gains, and for those in need, you could able to help them. For the sixty-five to seventy. Do not qualify for old age allowance, and you, because you claim it is hard to estimate projectively future expenditure. So let's say if you see the surplus, that you can have a one-off handouts for this young old, for the given allowance annually. So let's say, whether underestimating the surplus. So it's just simply a token of appreciation. So do you think you can, the old age allowance, we're going to make you rich? This is really the small things. Instead of how much you spend, you see, how you spend it. Your mentality, the public will notice. Finally, I would not support this budget, even if you give a handout of ten thousand dollars. Unless you offer universal retirement protection, they're willing to have this undertaking, but I will reconsider it. Mister Alokin.
Acting Madam President, at this point, we probably have the conclusion debate of this appropriation bill. I heard from the Pro-Establishment Camp that some others, that, why you, why you insist on filibustering? I disagree. We haven't done hardly any filibustering. We actually ran out of time. And today, let's go, not only did we not filibuster. That we're simply deferring you that you are, that's simply going through the motions and voting on the amendments. And we just conclude. So before I speak, I look at the, at the debates on the appropriations bill in the past few years. I found this, this. Situation similar, that the members have different opinions on the government departments and move a series of amendments. Especially after twenty sixteen, the number of members have been compressed. And this year, the number of amendments have been at new lows. So since twenty fifteen, when Mister Lang Guoxing with two thousand amendments have been completely rejected back. And up to today, within the shortest time, with an under twenty-two hours, we have. Have concluded debate on the appropriations bill. The room to speak is in question, since the let's go have yet to consider the heads of forty-six heads. I objected to include the schedule into the bill. And in theory, during the C S E stage, the member can speak on unlimited rounds, to speak on every member. However, during the C S E stage of the bill scrutiny, the president have arranged for twenty-two hours. And we have sixty-seven members, and now have sixty-seven members involving forty-six heads. So they'll only allow for seventeen seconds per member. The actual insufficient time for the members to outline their stance and to respond to the other amendments. Of course, some other members have strong views, for example, Doctor Mister Julius Ho. I sincerely listened to his views, and Mister Ho claimed that what we said was trivial. And the television audiences, we saw that we're not actually discussing anything meaningful. Madam Deputy.
Madam Deputy, let me, I'm sorry, sorry, I mistook you for the president or uh is uh the confusion of rules. So we have been district council members as we know that a water seepage is a very serious issue. However, as we can see that only here the A V H D and the buildings department for the joint offices for the water seepage investigation that some of this staff actually come to the uh public complaint division of Ledgeco and complaining of the problems inside the joint investigation office. If we don't discuss it at Ledgeco, um how can we be held accountable to Hong Kong people? Probably not. And I lost a lot of uh fiscal issues with that um too numerous to count. For example, a lot of uh uh misuse of uh pu- public funds. I noticed that Mister Felix Jung of Liberal Party have uh reminded me that you should uh visit the mainland more often and to um visit more overseas to know better about the world. Then I'm objected to my proposed custody um uh international exchanges and the mainland offices. We're not um getting uh obstructing the Hong Kong use to conduct exchanges in the mainland internationally because the mechanism itself is flawed. Why? Do we have a single organization obtaining most of the funding? And this is quite outrageous. So even at the D C level and a lot of the funding um schemes cannot be um approved in this way.
Uh, I hope. So while the chairman is here, so I don't need to refer to the madam deputy. So please allow members more time to speak on the various subjects under the budget. Yesterday, Mister Wu Chi Wei just asked for the chairman for five minutes and you wouldn't even allow it. Well, five minutes, we can cook noodles in five minutes. And it's not a lot of time. And um Mister Wu was just like to speak on the amendments to the budget and he didn't get a chance to speak. And then we asked um whether government officials have any response. They actually did not respond. Professor Sophia Chen uh is um senior representative of the uh nursing sector is also, she's also a teaching staff of the Hong Kong U. Yesterday, I spoke on the problems faced by the university grants committee. Now, you may be uh from the food and health bureau, but you are also, you were a professor of a higher institution. Uh it's not just me, many, uh even Mister Shu Kachun asked about those that Ben you just said, no response, that's it. And then the the whole debate on amendments was completed. So perhaps during the third reading, we want to know how um government officials respond to our views. Could you not respond to views of members on the different departments? I think that's important. Coming back to the budget, it it's really quite bad. Well, although we we see that most members voted for the amendments, they only voted against of uh some of the amendments because we we dare not vote against it. Now, um the most controversial part probably is about dishing out cash and it's become such um uh a hassle. And then even for the mother members like Mister Michael Chen uh said in his newspaper column, you know, if you um would agree to what I I suggested and I would not vote against it. But still, you wouldn't do that. Now, I hope I haven't misquoted Mister Ten. So the rating for the score for the budget for the two point eight percent. And then the government says, well, just only because the public don't know what's going on. And then there's another tracking survey done by the Hong Kong U after the announcement of budget. It's actually dropped from uh forty-eight point, two point eight percent to uh uh by another seven percent to um and then virtually minus twenty-three percent. So it's a substantial drop. I don't think the government could turn a blind eye to public views. They can't just brush aside the public discontent. And what are these figures telling us? That the public are not at all happy with the budget. And that's why at the end, the government came up with this um carrying and sharing scheme to plug us to plug the so-called loophole and it's because they want to salvage public um ratings. But then um after the scheme was announced, rating dropped further to minus forty-four percent. Now, in other countries, if government officials get such rating, they would have to step down. But uh may, so even though members voted for the amendments or the budget this time, uh we must not forget about the immense public discontent towards the budget. We have to consider why that's the case. Now, why are we moving so ma- many amendments to the budget? Because we rarely have the opportunity to uh comment on the performance of different departments as a whole. May I remind you, Mister All, we are not talking about amendments. We are in the third debate, so please come back to the third debate. Amendments were dealt with in the last debate. So this is the third session. This is about um considering amendments um standing part of the schedule. I think my understanding is correct, right? So that's why this is the opportunity for me to comment on the budget as a whole. Now, for this budget, um one of the most controversial areas is about infrastructure projects. Some members said that the opposition camp would only oppose the infrastructure projects because they think all infrastructural projects are white elephants, they are undesirable. But let's take a closer look. This year, we talk about the innovation and technology development, but there is a heavy real estate element in that. When we talk about developing um information technology, um innovation and technology, we could be talking about another cyber port or another science park. That's what we might see at the Glock Marchau Loop. And so at the end, all we have left is a real estate project. It's not truly innovation and technology project. We want to promote the development of innovation and technology in a budget. There should be response to the different scenarios faced by the industry, for example, problems faced by staff. Now, for the um a public works subcommittee, finance committee or the debate on this budget, the loyalists would only vote yes to everything. And they would think that all amendments moved by the pandemic press are unreasonable. If that's the case, why would I have so much grievances about um the Financial Services Development Bureau Council? Because that's the very origin of the problems we have with the link. It's because this council advocated certain policies and that's why this council is not able to monitor the link properly now. Now, many members work on ways to improve the link um or or providing more markers or enforcing the land lease condition and so on, but that's not enough. Now, for financial policies, they come from different um parties and bodies and at the end, we suffer from these policies. Now, we are giving funds to certain policies that will hurt certain sectors in Hong Kong for the uh budgets in future. I hope that there will be careful consideration on financial services as to whether the policies we are proposing make sense. Now, I said uh in the earlier debate on this budget that government doesn't know how to spend money when it's got the money. So the public don't get a benefit from that. Now, we are an affluent society with so many social problems that shows that if the government is not accountable to the public, the government, the public could not um um you know, impose check and balance on the government through elections. Now, there was the uh five district um referendum. At the time, the theme was without democracy, how can we have proper people's livelihood? Eight years later, we are debating the budget. And uh democracy, democracy is actually moving further away from us and there is now less room for debate too. Now, former legislator, Miss Emily Chao Lau said that, you know, we are tough guys in the coming days. And we will still stand firm. When there's democracy, then that's um good people's livelihood. If the legislature is still controlled by the functional constituencies and the loyalists and there's no way we can have a budget that really is accountable to the public. So for government officials at various levels, hear this. In the past two days, um you know, there are changes in Malaysia and I'm sure this day will come to Hong Kong. Thank you. Mister Kenneth Long. This is the first budget of this term of the government and this is the second budget of this financial secretary. In his speech, the F S um said a lot about the so-called fiscal philosophy or the strategies adopted in preparing the budget. In considering whether a budget is acceptable or not, I will only consider four points. And these four points are universal to any countries or any time or any period. First of all, a budget must be effective in providing resources for the government's day-to-day operation. That's important. If the budget fails to achieve that, doesn't matter what philosophy you talk about, it amounts to nothing. That's the first point, very the first, the very important first point. The second point, there must be effective, and I emphasize effective, distribution of resources or redistribution of wealth. So it depends on whether you want to do the distribution in that particular year or uh in the long run, you want distribution of public resources effectively, not ineffectively. We shouldn't be wasting public resources. The third consideration on whether a budget is acceptable is that whether this budget could help the taking forward of social policies. And there are two aspects here. One, investment in the future. The F S mentioned that too. And what do you mean by investing in the future? I'm saying that at this stage in Hong Kong, we're talking about um social infrastructure building. Social infrastructure, not just a hardware or infrastructure. We're talking about talents. We're talking about um caring for the community. Social infrastructure building is um closely tied to our investment in the future. As we help government to implement policies, there's another limb that is the policies must be, that is um long-term and sustainable economic development. So these are the three objective criteria, I would say, um rather than four. So three objective criteria, that's what I will use in um considering budgets of any country. From the end of February to now, let's look at what actually happened. Now, after the F S um delivered this budget, what is my observation? First of all, in the community, there are three different views. First, the in this budget, the government has been spending money generously, but how can we spend money effectively so the community stands to benefit in the long run? So the uh uh there must be actual obje- uh indicators and objectives that is say in five years, how many hospitals we can build? Or in five years, what can we achieve at this uh in innovation and technology? For example, uh at bus stops, we will be informed whether the bus will arrive in five minutes or ten minutes. And uh what about passengers on buses? Do they have to stand? Is the condition cramped and so on? You know, we see nothing at all about such um future objectives. In other words, uh in a budget, there are no milestones, there are no objectives. Second point, does this budget exist alone in this space? No, we're talking about um term of a government, a five-year term of a government. You can't say that this year, we're doing this, next year, we say, talk about something else. No, it can't be done that way. As members of the public, how do we look at the budget? Well, let's say it's a five um series, five episode series. You have to give us the um um the theme of the of the uh of the drama and then we will decide whether it's a good drama or not. And when we decide on that, we'll have to consider the whole storyline and we'll see whether it's an attractive story. And if we find that the ending doesn't work, it's then the public or, you know, will have negative comments on the episode and I or I as a legislator with a negative comment on the budget.
When the community look at the budget, well, I personally hope that that be a paradigm shift. So when we look at the storyline for the five-episode uh drama series, we should also be looking at the performance at individual episode to see if the performance has been remarkable. So so uh instead of looking at the overall target or objective, well, as I just said, we need to have targets, milestones and so on, and that's what the administration has to do via a budget. Conceptually, I've been criticizing you on all those areas, but then there are also things that I find unacceptable. There are too many. Well, uh this year, of course, we do have a win for, but then when I ask you, how are you going to use that money within your bureau? And if you don't use it uh um this year, well, um if I'm giving you uh uh what, ten billion dollars, then if if you're not able to use it this year, then what about next year or the year after next? If all the bureaus have not been able to give us the short, medium to long-term plan, then um can we just say that is a total failure? All right, I can now forecast that definitely next year, you're going to have another surplus of over a hundred and twenty billion dollars. Well, with the change in the listing rules, you we are seeing a long queue of companies coming to get listed in Hong Kong and stamp duties revenue will definitely go up. Of course, it's hard to uh make predictions these days and well, somehow, someday, somewhere, there might be a war. And as a result, um things might gone astray and um things might not have been as as expected. But then if everything goes the way we now see, then obviously for the hundred, hundred or so billion dollar surplus, definitely uh that's going to happen. But then I'm sure you're you'll not be telling us that because you would always be very conservative when it comes to uh surplus forecasting. But then um well, very rarely would a financial secretary tell the community that that this year, we're going to have two hundred billion dollars as surplus. So being prudent and conservative in making forecasts, well, as a professional, as an accountant, while your former or predecessor, John Zhang, while he was in his post, he gave us a conservative forecast. Well, in many respects, it's necessary. And I would not have expected you to be able to come up with an accurate forecast or estimate. Despite all that, despite the fact that I have a lot of criticisms about your budget this year, and also for many bureau directors in terms of how they use the surplus, I find it most disappointing. In fact, I also have to point out, I rarely name names, but then for the I T B, I think their performance has been very disappointing. Other than the so-called very trivial policies, I do not see how the Innovation and Technology Bureau can bring Hong Kong or lead Hong Kong in developing it into an I T hub. There is a lack of new thinking and creative or creativity in terms of its thinking. Yes, there are also certain bright spots. Number one, our financial services sector, we put in a lot of efforts in developing our bond market and also our green finances and so on. And a lot of resources. It's just in terms of amount of money, how is it going to be used next year? Please do make sure that you'd come back and tell us how you would improve our public healthcare sector. This is a very important area. And also in terms of sports and cultural development, a lot of resources have been put into those areas. Yet, we are talking about putting money into certain silos. You will have to tell us. Maybe it's not the financial secretary personally telling us that. But then you will have to make sure that all bureau directors will be able to tell the community as to how the money will be spent and when it's going to be spent. And after it's spent, before the announcement of the budget, you will have to tell us. All right, last year for the ten billion dollars, well, all of that, six hundred or six billion dollars has been spent on these areas. And in the budget just now, under item one hundred and seventy-three, there have been some changes. And you talk about, and we are talking about the caring and sharing scheme. And in different media and on different occasions, I've already told you that I'm not happy with this scheme. But then, overall speaking, if you look at the entire budget, if you look at the developments during the past two months, I have to give a score to this budget. What, Mr Chairman, what, what, the night before last, I dreamt Karl Marx and I chatted with him about this budget. And last night, I also chatted with him because this year is the two hundred birthday of Karl Marx. Well, the two great economists, and also in terms of their fiscal philosophy, well, the chief executive liked to talk about it. And last night, I also had a very in-depth discussion with him. In fact, I went back to the two philosophers and economists. I read their writings to see what I should, what score I should be giving this budget. And also for this term of government, you deliver this budget. And in the end, my assessment is that I cannot oppose this budget. And for the, for those of us from the same political group, that's the, well, we would have our own judgment. Next, Junior Soho. Chairman, after two weeks of discussion on the amendments, colleagues have expressed their views. And just now, we also completed the voting on the amendments. And there was a scene that was standing evidence of what kind of a farce it was. If you look at the amendments, all of them were just fanfare without any grounds and so on. Even they themselves do not believe in it. Why have I said so? Well, for the twenty-seven members of their camp, today, only fifteen or sixteen of them are here. When the amendments were put to the vote, and out of the fifteen, sixteen of them who were here, well, only six to twelve of them would be voting in favor of those amendments. So generally, it would be six to eight. And most of the time, they would be abstaining. And what's even more outrageous, for those who are rational enough, they would be prepared to vote against the amendments. In other words, for those in the same camp, they have not really supported their own amendments. So as high as seventy percent of those amendments were not supported by they themselves. What does this tell us? Well, even they themselves do not have faith in what they do. They know themselves that these are very hypocritical amendments, and they simply will not stand. We are on session three. We should not be speaking anything that should be related to such, to the second session. Yes, I know, I know that, Mr Chairman, well, I'm against the forty-four amendments that have been rejected. So I'm against including that in the budget. So that for item one seventy and one seventy-three, I support the financial secretary's amendment. I've already spoken most of it. But then the only other point that I'd like to add is, Mr Chairman, well, I cited this as an example. It's a classic example. That is, Mr Gary Fan, item sixty-seven. If you look at his amendment, how can you expect that for the forty-seven point nine billion dollars for the procurement or purchase of Dongjiang River water? How can that be rejected altogether? And if we follow that line, does it mean that Hong Kong people's interests will be completely forgotten? So is it that we can only expect that there'll be rain from heaven so that Hong Kong people will have enough water to drink? So this is, of course, an extreme example. But then out of the sixty-plus amendments that they have moved, quite a few of them are of this nature. So today, we have had a very lengthy discussion on this. And during the past two weeks, when we debated the budget, we spent a lot of time on this. It's not about whether or not the pandemocratic colleagues have been denied or deprived of their right to speak. We have to know that. We have to be neutral and impartial in making our speeches. This is what I'd like to say. Thank you. Mr Shi Kachun, thank you, Mr Chairman. Well, there's some note saying that, well, for the pro-establishment camp, they always look alike and they always speak alike. Only the pandemocrats, they are very diversified. Well, coming back to today's topic, that's the budget. What is most attention drawing is the fiscal philosophy. And Karl Marx was named today. So he said that, well, a budget is used or is, is to change the world. It's not about spending money. In fact, it's about spending money to change Hong Kong so that Hong Kong can be turned into a better place. But then in the process of changing the world, inevitably, there would be a lot of debates. There would be a lot of representations. But then, as Mr Ngok Him said, and as Mr Wuchihai just said, well, during the past few days' debate, the most boring part of it is that it's a monologue. There is no dialogue at all. So it's only us who work very hard to try to express our views and elaborate on our views. And yet, there's no response from the officials. There's no supplement whatsoever. And they just said that, nothing to add. And thank you, Chairman. Well, because of this monologue, so the more time that we spend in this chamber, the colder we feel because we are facing a huge mountain. It's like a stone wall that we face. So it's hard to tell them anything. But then I really hope that for those who are watching, or those who are concerned about this, please do know what we're talking about and areas that they should be following up on. Well, when it comes to this budget, my overall response to it is that, first of all, I'd like to thank the breakthrough achieved by twenty-one percent because originally in terms of government spending, well, it's set at twenty percent of the GDP. And now we finally had this breakthrough. I know that making a breakthrough is very difficult. I understand that when the head is buried in the sand for a long time, then many small animals will grow. So in order to move this rock, it's very hard, if at all possible. So this is a breakthrough. So whenever there is a breakthrough, whenever, whenever we are able to break through this bottleneck, we have to recognize it. Well, this year is twenty-one percent. I hope that next year or the year after next, it can grow further. Given the fact that we have already had this breakthrough of the bottleneck, we should not be straightjacketed by this framework. And also in terms of spending, in excess of twenty-one percent for recurrent expenditure and also for the one thousand two hundred extra social workers post, well, this would be very specific improvement. So as a result of that, the welfare sector and also many recipients of welfare would benefit. So these should be recognized and confirmed. But then in the welfare sector, there are four wounds. Has the budget been able to put a band-aid on these areas? What are the four wounds? Well, the lump sum grants and also the quality of residential care homes. And also the review of the system and also universal retirement protection. All right, the F S might say that for the lump sum grant system, well, at meetings, you should have known that a task force has been set up. And Shi Kachun and also Fernando Jang, you are members of that. We have Long Chi Chong and Lok Chong Hong. So different members are sitting on that committee and we are discussing the reforms.
So we have just convened a meeting. We set up the scope of, of the task force. And this coming Monday, at the welfare panel, there will be a whole-day public hearing with a hundred and one deputations signing up. Everyone would have three minutes from nine-twenty in the morning to four-thirty in the afternoon. And we might be finished by then. So this reaction shows that the system in need of improvement. We thank the government to respond it. What came in class is, is not the system would make issue, but rather implementation issues on this lump sum grant. So it's just embarked on the reform process. But at the end, I'll set up a lot of the taboo no-go zones. So it can enhance instead of reviewing, so it can be reviewed but cannot be overturned. So these are the premises. The committee have the word enhancement in it. Just, we'll just call it the task force on the lump sum grant. No, we count that. We have, so it have to insert the wording enhancement in it. So you don't call it a premises what it is. So you could have said, you just, why don't you just leave the task force? If you're not satisfied, just walk away and don't take part in it. So we want to engage till the last step. One would have the review on the lump sum grant system. However, the premises will be on enhancement. There will be no welfare planning. However, and the one, there should just have a review on its services. I wonder what's like by Monday on the public hearing. At the same time, there will be a rally. A lot of the staff in the welfare sector will take, like, for example, the Labor Welfare Secretary will come to receive the petition. So it seems to have some dialogue, but yet with under premises. Another big so-called wound will be the quality of the residential homes. There were carried about the elderly abuse and the abuse against the disabled. How would this not only happen in unruly staff or rather than a individual conduct? And in the ordinance itself, constitute abuse, what has not been updated in twenty-two years? They standard back in twenty-two years ago, why couldn't be adjusted? And now you're telling us we already set up a task force to conduct a review. And Mr Shi and Dr Cheng are both members. Yes, we're both members. However, at every meeting, we I see the public officials have inclined towards to favor the private sector. That all any amendments will lead to a closure of private residential homes. That a lot of the elderly and the disabled would have no roof over their heads. And then we call about the hostage theory. So did you want this, one thousand, two thousand resident without any care services? It's better to have some residential places than no residential places. So when talk about the per capita space, that currently is six point five meters, square meters. So and they remain, in time their life, they can only live their remaining years. This is in the six point five square meters. This is what a caring society, after much discussion, the government will probably decide between eight to nine point five square meters. And now the grade A is only at eight point five. So we just stick the Class A residential homes. So that is the reform after twenty-two years. As we all know, this ordinance, after the amendment, will to wait for another twenty-second, two years for amendment. This would call a minor patch up. So that's what happened after convening many meetings with showing that there's no major flaws and therefore it would be continued. So the four biggest win in the welfare sector has been touched upon in the budget. However, these are considered a false gestures. The other two wounds on the C S S A review. For the past few decades, there have been two with time to C S A to reduce, and yet they have not been added up. Why the poverty alleviation has been counterproductive? And why the C P I in the C S calculation have not been reviewed? So which of the items will be included in a C S A while with, which ones that be excluded? Why hasn't been adjusted in nineteen ninety-six? We hope there'll be a comprehensive review of the C S S A. So just casually, we can come up with twenty-something loopholes. The C S S A mechanism had over two dozen, twenty-something odd of loopholes. This is a safety net with over twenty loopholes. You can claim your subjective. Let's say, let's take reduced by half. This, there are a dozen or so loopholes. So how safe is the safety net? We hope to have a holistic review and only claim that you review otherwise. You just act when we notice a shortage. We're actually reviewing it every day. We comprehensive when it's not needed because it will be time-consuming. So you're reviewing it every day? So in this way, we don't have any, what a comprehensive review would not be required. So let's not even talk about universal retirement protection. So Carrie Lam claimed that it's out of the question. This is more frivolous than other frivolous issues. When you ask her, what is her mother tongue? And she replied, I would not answer such frivolous questions. So something more frivolous than the mother tongue was that, what is your views on universal retirement protection? So from day one, she already closed the doors, said the word universal is a bad thing, is unfeasible. So universal retirement protection is unmanageable. I'd rather do something else. One, without One without um this the old age living allowance, they have no um long-term financial undertaking. For these four major rooms, two of them also four two gestures and two other ones have been simply ignored. And the finance secretary in my submission in January have outlined ten. Um topics, three of them responded. Three of them have acted partly upon the remaining ten ones. I repeatedly um pressed on uh for you to respond. These are really simple things you can give us a prompt reply. For example, um. Um the uh when the children who are intellectually disabled parents, however, they are of normal intelligence. Well, um they don't have any childhood, can you offer support to them? In the end, they have been ignored. The T W H um has shot a documentary. On this children of this able or intellectually disabled parents. So how these children spend their childhood? So when they grow up and they have take care of their parents as well. So why couldn't we support these children? For example, um the um housing estate social service teams. So we went to on that on. Yet it stays to look at the occupation of this new housing estate. It's actually. It could be good thing, but um but at the same time, we incur a lot of expenses, so it exposed a lot of social problems, for example, social service support. Transport and um school places. We hope that we have these social service teams with the new housing estate, where they'll be stationed for five years with six social workers. How much will it cost anyway? Or effort um for the self-help committee house, for the part the policy address mentioned health. Uh I have to have supported the mutual as it help organizations, but while there's no mention of this, so every two years to only get out three hundred thousand people. So um they would exhaust their funding by hiring one staff. On the one hand, we claim to care about rehabilitation and the elderly care and the long-term chronic sufferers. So this help of organizations play an important role. So for two year, it only costs about three hundred thousand people. So that's all the assistance you get for two years. So let's say you claim just gives one million because there's been problems in the policy address. So. I ask you, can you be more specific that what kind of assistance be offered? Can you double up? No mention of it. And um a compassionate this uh resettlement. Of rehousing. So instead of deciding by the H D. Instead of the integrated families service centers of the, can we have the dedicated team to deal with it compassionate rehousing? Simple questions like that. Um we're simply um screaming into a tree hole. Um president, as the member for the social welfare constituency, I would not object to this appropriations bill. However, for the responsive matters, I could not support this appropriation bill. So between supporting and opposing to it. And um those who hope the government who take an extra step, that will be in the the opinion within. And next, Dr. Priscilla Yang. I'm president. We come approaching the end of the debate on the appropriation bill. I um this time we've allocated thirty eight point eight five hours on this debuts is a reasonable. So last time, last year, the president allocated sixty hours. So uh if the thirty hours be used wisely, there should be a quality debate. So objectively speaking, this time we have rang less uh bell and got the public had not. Uh expressed the annoyance and couldn't hurt the administration response, which is an improvement that we should acknowledge. So um that what has to do with the amendment of the rules of procedures and um. A German felt to be useful. I hope that the uh appropriations bill can return to this a more normal style of debate. Would focus on the uh quality of our speeches instead of the public telling us. This is an uh uh filibustering. I hope that there will be more positive public response from now on. So of this sixty seven amendments, two of them by the government, so we can further reduce them. So overall speaking, so. In the past, there are only sixty or seven of them and the establishment camp and the Democratic camp were able to engage quality debate. So um it's common to have a diverse views in the in the public that how it should be debated. If we can focus our effort, so we stand a chance, that especially on likely issues. To uh adjust the bureaucracy. Or some sort of uh um intellectual dilemma. The ideology, a straight jacket. So Miss Kandla mentioned Adam Smith and Karl Marx. From what I understand, the Hong Kong government fiscal philosophy is just played by the ear. So that. Actually, that definitely mentioned by um Mr. Andrew Wong, former electoral president. There's not even an incremental approach into reaching the ideal mechanism. We don't even have this. So can we uh continue with this? And now that we simply cannot stick to our old ways in the backdrop of the whole situation. So if for the long-term measure, we're able to uh have the um a comprehensive uh planning instead of uh. Uh play by the ear and one uh for the uh. For uh oldest workers about to retire. And currently, we can see that um to have a better protection than us. So when we. Are richer, can we just stick to the former decision-making, old decision-making mode?
No, I don't think so. Universal retirement protection is a really touch uh touchy subject. As Mrs. Xu Ka Chen said, it's easy for us to talk about it, but what is the burden we're talking about? What kind of burden are we leaving behind? For our next generation because we need to be accountable to them. And then there are two major problems we face. Now we have um so much surplus, but we also need to work harder, earn more, so we can make the pie bigger. Because um population aging is soon upon us. I don't like to use the term elderly, uh even in the community, people say they don't like to be called um elderly, we just call them old friends. Or even young old, they don't like it. Old friends is best. Because um you know, being sixty these days in Hong Kong is nothing really. I am shared with you the new age distribution uh published by the United Nations. Now, for the election of Mahata Mahatia as the president again in Malaysia, it's not so much about politics. I think I'm looking at from the angle that he's ninety two and he's elected. Now Trump must be happy, Donald Trump must be happy, he's only seventy one years old, so that that's not old at all. Of course, Mahatia was first elected in thirty nine. But that shows that that um there are, you know, landslide changes in the political landscape. Now um people no longer just look at age, young people won't just vote for young people. They have to look at the policies you have. Which would benefit themselves and the community. It's not necessary the case that young people. Will all support a universal retirement protection so they you can support their parents for them. No. They are willing to listen to options. So we need to see where we'll be in five or ten years. Doctor Lo Chi Kwong. Well, he's the brain of the Democratic camp in the past. We talked about. Two dollar transport subsidy for all those who retired who have no work and they recovered. And what about um a dental service? Can they be covered in the elderly care uh healthcare voucher? So this all goes back to. So Professor So Weicheng and then and and then I'm told to go to the Labor Welfare Bureau. So I'm at a loss. I support the budget, but at the same time, I believe the government needs to break through in many different aspects. Uh uh and I know for some issues, it would take five or ten years for that to materialize. For example. Um amendment to the fire safety legislation, now there will be a two billion dollar fund. And I complimented effort, but then uh it's because we're talking about aging buildings as well. So how do we think of of the box in the face of an aging population? Because it's a real issue before us that we need to tackle. Now, if we don't, even if we don't have the so-called universal retirement protection. What about retirees when they won't go to the doctors because they want to save money? What can we do to help them? Now, three hundred billion dollars uh in have been announced in the budget for um hospital building. That's well much welcome. But then at the same time, um many, not just old people, but also young people now prefer Chinese medicine. They believe. Uh Chinese medicine is not yet in the system. And so now Chinese medicine is only affordable to the rich. That's what some think now. Yes, we do have voluntary Chinese, traditional Chinese medicine practitioners, but. I think we should include traditional Chinese medicine in mainstream system. Now, uh the former legislator, Dr. Lung Carlau, told me that people's. Half of people's savings go to medical expenses eventually. Well, in in that case, it's the voluntary healthcare insurance, something good then. Now I need to make an appointment with um Mr. Paul Chen, uh Mr. Chen King Paul rather. Uh because for those most in need, they are left out of the insurance system. So what can the government do to uh um underwrite the voluntary healthcare insurance scheme? Can there be more assurance given to those who would like to join the scheme? How can we ensure that the middle class won't become without assets? How do we not to increase the rate proportion of the poor? And now young people also face similar problems because they probably have someone old in their households as well. And then for young people, we talk about their career development, um housing needs and so on. Now uh some. About some ten years ago, all of a sudden, um having a home, uh buying a home is is become the dream of most young people. And that's a problem, of course. Now property prices have soared, uh so some couldn't manage to buy the first home, some managed to buy the first home. Uh in twenty oh five and some in twenty twelve. At the time, it was much easier. And at the time, there was the first time home buyer scheme to help people with stable income, so they were able to buy their first home. At the time, mortgage could be up to ninety percent, but in the last decade, property prices have soared. And um maybe people like my younger members assistants, uh they don't. If they don't spend any money at all, don't eat, don't drink, for nineteen years, they still could not afford to buy a home. Stamp duty, you know, which is a demand-side measure, it doesn't really address the root of the problem. It's the wrong medication, if you ask me. So or the wrong medicine, if you ask me. So. Um what about people with stable jobs? Could they be helped in any way to buy their home, like the first time home buyer scheme or some sort of bank um loan policy to help them? Now we're talking about the Bay Old Road Initiative and Bay Area Development a lot. And then there are six over sixty thousand startup businesses in Bay Area. Many young people want to become the next Jack Ma or Lei Jun. And they have great confidence, they have the drive. What about us? What about our young people here in Hong Kong? Now liberal studies could be a good thing, but let's not just focus on political bickering. What about young people when they face adversities, like if they fail in their first attempt at the business, how do they start again? Now I know a friend, uh he the friends, they did not go to university, but now their friend became. Um outstanding young person because he managed to come up with a good business model. So shouldn't that be something, some food for thought for young people? These days, we're not just talking about some degrees, maybe we're going into Harry Potter age as well. Now in twenty year, now there was the Shanghai Expo, there was an auto business that produced a film. In a film, there was a young blind girl who had this um um strivers cast given to him, her by her father. Uh because she's blind, she just need to press a button and then she could go to her father's concert. But it's not reality. They're doing it actually uh on the mainland. It's only nine years since. What about humanity development? I I attended um Romanian seminar. The young people who said today, what do we look for? So we're not talking about robot uh um having, I say, a court case of human beings, but with robots. So. It is, you know, new thinking and I'm very much inspired too. So young people, they are brilliant. How do we help them though? Now with this current bureaucracy in Hong Kong, you want to do a lot of things, but you can't. And many who are competent have joined the government, but they're not able to do what they want have had wanted to do. I'm sure many under secretaries or secretaries know what I'm talking about. So budget is only the tip of the iceberg. The financial secretary was a legislator himself. He's more than willing to um. Listen to our views and he does make good his promises. I must compliment him for that. For example, he's now allowed an annuity. But we need to do more, we need to make a bigger pie. We're talking about cross-generational development, you know, um. Now, because we need young leaders. Someone who is in his twenties and then there's someone in his nineties. And then we have world leaders in different age groups, so they all belong to different generations. So shouldn't Hong Kong try to keep up? Now, young people said they know, uh many still struggling with um. Uh the living condition, but then many young people want to keep pets, they don't want to have children. So pet garden, pet um uh hospital, blah, blah, blah. Uh and a pet legislation because they don't want any more abuse or killing of animals and. Uh because, you know, people abandon the pets when they become old. We need to have pet police as well. We need to do, um you know, something of this sort as well. Now I'm going to support the budget today because I hope that we will do better in Hong Kong. We need to be bold. You need to make breakthroughs. Hong Kong has come to the stage that we need to break through from uh our from the box. Thank you. Mister Charles Mark. I'm glad to see the financial secretary, the secretary for innovation and technology and the secretary for education here. I hope you'll stay behind to listen to our views. Of course, for most people in the community, they care most about whether there's any this uh cash handout in the budget and so on. Now the government, of course, another focus must be that the government's support for innovation and technology. Now, whether it's support for I N T or any other industry, it can't be just about giving money or building infrastructure. If you look at the dollar amount, it's more than fifty billion dollars of funds. Being invested in I N T. So the industry should welcome that. But for many in the industries, or many of the professionals in the industry said that there is nothing to do with them. Well, perhaps if the um overall climate changes for the better, they they may benefit too. But anyway. But anyway, I think that's a good example to show that just some floating figure or dollar amount is not going to help address the needs of the industry. Now, some say that it's not, that I must benefit from the Cyberport or the Science Park project, whatever. But it's rather, well, you can help me with policies. Now, from the policy address to the budget, there have been debates in the community and people have come to realize this point. So in the past, people would only focus on whether there's some more funds given to the industry than, say, the year before, and if that's the case, I'll be happy. But now, I think people start to see it's more than about resources. Of course, if resources are put in the right place, they help. I think in the last two, three days, Mr. Yuang must have been really busy responding to various issues. And I think I need to respond to what happened in the past two or three days. Now, why I say the government needs to do more in the budget on various policy fronts, and it's not just about giving money. Two years ago, Mr. Kevin Young announced the talent scheme for importation of talents for the I N T industry. Well, I told the media, everywhere in the world is competing for talents. We need to do a bit as well. But at the same time, it's more than about competing for talent. We need to retain our own talents. We need more people to come back to Hong Kong because they need to see that we cherish our talents.
How do we retain our talents? Policy-wise, the administration has to make changes. Can the administration take the lead so that for the entire industry, well, for frontline staff who are working very hard because of the outsourcing arrangements? Can you change this policy so that instead of increasing outsourcing, you should do otherwise? And also, they are actually doing the same job without the same pay. So there are intermediaries eating into their pay. And for those in their thirties, they might not have reached the middle age yet. So they might need to change to other jobs. So can you work harder to help them change? And also, can you attract more overseas companies, including not just mainland companies, but the leading international companies, so that they can come here to hire local staff for R and D work? When the environment improves, then I'm sure it will become more attractive to overseas talents and they'll become more open to recruiting overseas staff. But then, can you do that in tandem, instead of doing the, just doing it step by step? Not like what C Y Lern used to say, that, well, and whatever is mature will be rolled out first. Well, if you're thinking in that direction, if you're thinking about policies of this nature, then can they be rolled out in tandem, instead of giving the public the impression that you're biased in favor of a particular side, that you're focusing on importing labor rather than really focusing on nurturing talents? Well, just yesterday, we had this news and some netizens found out that, well, a central communication system has been outsourced and that was approved by the F C. So some two hundred and thirty million dollars has been awarded to a company. And it was found out that, well, it's a mainland company and whether or not that might be security problems. Yes, we can answer that question because basically this company is just providing services and the platform and the server will still be in the hands of the government. And the administration has already answered the question. So it's not an issue of security. But how come this contract has been awarded to this mainland company? And this is also a newly set-up company without much history. And how come they've been able to get that contract? Well, that's because of the lowest bidder gets the contract. Well, it's not that no Hong Kong company is interested in putting in their bids. It's just that they've lost. Well, we don't have to really worry about the security issue. I think the biggest problem is that, in any case, they would be recruiting staff. Well, some of them would be local staff and they are actually driving down the pay. So how can we attract talents? Is it that, as a result, we are asking the young people to go to the Bay Area? Well, for the frontline workers or staff, the message is really very confusing. All right, on the net today, people are actually saying that two hundred and thirty million dollars is very cheap. I can tell you that many companies have put in their bids. It's just that they have lost. That's because this company is the cheapest, is by far the cheapest. So the lowest bidder takes it has been hurting all of us. Well, they say that they followed all procedures. So, Mr. Chairman, is the problem with the procedures? So can the administration do something about the procedures? Because this is affecting the ecology of the industry and it's also affecting many people's livelihood. We are talking about thousands or tens of thousands. We're talking about seventy, eighty thousand people in that industry. Their livelihood is under threat. And in the policy address, Carrie Lam set out eight points. In fact, the seventh is about the government taking the lead in changing its procurement method so that I T element can be included, so that it's not just that the lowest bidder will take it so as to create a better environment for innovation and technology. But then, I'm afraid you haven't been able to implement it yet. That's the reason why yesterday we had this news that this project has been awarded to a mainland firm. So you will have to work faster and harder. Next, yesterday, there was also another piece of news. Well, up till now, I had no idea as to what's meant by the eight-stage exercise. And yesterday, we'd been told that the I T fund awarded this to the North Point Welfare Association and some four million dollars has been awarded to this, to this Kyphon Association for mobile labs, which will teach the elders to do some exercise. Well, some would say that it's very costly, but I'd say that sometimes I don't know what this item would include. So it's hard to say whether it's too costly. But then, some people said that, well, it might be better if we hire some coaches to really teach them how to do the exercise. So the thing is, we have to scrutinize these projects very carefully. From another perspective, you will have to look at whether or not the amount is reasonable. And of course, we don't have enough information to say yes or no. But then, we will have to work hard to increase transparency so that people will not just be second guessing. Because if you look at the two examples that I just cited, well, in some instances, if the administration can explain the details, then we might be able to understand. Even if there might be flaws, we would be prepared to accept it. But then, right from the beginning, can the administration enhance the transparency so that that would not have to be so much second guessing? And that's the reason why many people do not have confidence in the government. And if the administration wants to change this, the only thing to do is to enhance transparency. Mr. Chairman, if the administration continues to do it like that, you've been giving people an impression that you're focusing on infrastructure. You're setting up funds to give out cash handouts is no longer adequate. How do we create more opportunities? How do we nurture talents? How do we enhance transparency? And what's more important is how can we ensure that the stakeholders will be involved in making policies, in formulating policies? These are very important things. Well, many people asked me during the past two days with regard to the talent admission scheme for the I T sector. Well, have you been consulted? Well, I said no, and other from the same sector would also say no. In fact, they have a lot of views to make. So when this scheme starts in June, I hope that you take the opportunity to listen more widely so that members of the public and also the stakeholders and also the frontline workers' views will be taken on board. Well, the budget is about money. And when you read it, you would be used to reading or finding out the figures and whether or not there would be a sweetness given to them and so on. Well, over the years, well, there have been changes. Because when it comes to the budget, people would often become more short-sighted. This is not good. But then, apparently, this is like a cycle. It's a cyclical issue. It happens year after, year after year. And when it, when it happens, the administration has the responsibility to take the lead in changing things, instead of just looking at how much is given to you. For example, I just looked at I T, looked at the I T sector. Fifty billion dollars might not seem to be a very big amount. Well, if you put it into the Lok Ma Chao loop area, it's not that much. But then, actually, it might need more if you really invest in it. Instead of spending fifty billion dollars, well, it might not be enough. But then, in other areas, what they have seen is the administration has done nothing to help them. That's why sometimes we are embarrassed because apparently we are enjoying the boom because we've got fifty billion dollars. But then, if you look at other areas, for example, social welfare, elderly needs, and also universal retirement protection, and also education and so on. In fact, you have not done enough in these areas. And as the financial secretary, while the administration is sitting on such huge wealth, you should have been able to make sure that everybody will be happy. But then, if you look at this budget, if you look at the initiative proposed by the budget, we should push it forward. We should be more forward-looking. We should see how we can do a better job in the future. And you should also be looking back as to which areas have not been addressed adequately. For example, as you know, my view on this, well, the chief executive also said that you will have to enhance I T development in eight areas. I noticed that in three areas, including R and D resources, including startup investments and also science and technology and so on, including the River Loop development. Well, the administration apparently seemed to have got started very expeditiously. But what about the other areas? You haven't done really enough. For example, on nurturing more talents on I T. And also, you talked about another scheme the other day, and it's just part of it. But then, what about retaining local talents? How you can help them switch to other areas and so on? You haven't done enough. And also, the fifth area, well, originally, it should have been the fifth point, that is about reviewing local legislation and regulations and also opening up government data. And you also have to change the procurement methodology, instead of just having the lowest bid get saw. And also, you would also have to look at the curriculum. You can tell the Education Bureau in those areas that you have not done enough. Can you speed up? Can you give us the policy so that we know where the policy is taking us? And on procurement methodology, you might take a long time. We don't know. So we hope that something can be seen quickly. Or else you would not be able to convince the public that you do have targets in terms of effectiveness, and there is no direction in terms of your policy. And then you would not be able to win hearts and minds and confidence. And people or the government will be very worried that you would be criticized again. And I hope that this year is just the beginning. I hope that the F S will become more transparent, will be more prepared to listen so that you'll be working faster, so that you'll be rolling out policies that are more creative and innovative, instead of just asking the high-power consultancy or advisory boards. You will have to talk to those working at the frontline. Well, you're talking about some seventy, eighty thousand in the sector. So these are the small startups and small entrepreneurs. You will have to talk to them. And I believe that the future budgets and also government policies will be more, will be supported by more people. Claudia Mo.
Hong Kong's on steroids, and this government in particular is spastic. It's actually spastic because at first, they claim they've got some brand-new fiscal philosophy. And then, in no time, they're flailing in all directions. Of course, I'm talking about that cash handout controversy. It's just so ugly, a scene on the whole. When we talk about handouts, of course, we would mean handouts for all. And this just might be against this public money spending concept that we should go after equity, not equality as such. We should only help those people in need. But then, I'm not going to waste time to give you an account of what's happened. We are all witnesses to it. Yes, we need to save money for rainy days, for future even more mega projects. But then, while this argument could be quite sound, our financial chief quickly caved in. Oh, yes, yes, maybe cash handout is not too bad an idea after all. I thought he would put up some grand rebuttals to the proposal of giving just all, some money from the government coffers. No, he said, oh, I think we actually forgot about a section of the poverty sector in Hong Kong, and we need to make amends. But you can't just flip-flop like this, right? So so much about this so-called new fiscal philosophy. Well, it's the demonstration from obliviousness to feigned understanding. It's such a pity to see our financial chief having to swallow his pride to finally succumb to popular demand of this, in this particular aspect. And of course, this final decision of paying out cash to the public has come with political considerations. We never expected any intelligence in this regard, let alone any Einstein-level kind of intelligence. Sorry?
Do you have a mobile phone next to you because there is this strange sound? Can you put it further away from you?
Now, we're watching a government which would, for one moment, pretending to be standing firm. And then the next could be brought down to its knees. And you couldn't help thinking that all this has been done at the behest of some big brother up there. And I can't define up there, whether it's up in Beijing or simply upstairs. But upstairs is upstairs, right? And politics is perception. Public spending is also about perception. And we can't help having this impression that, once again, top government officials, those dealing with money, our taxpayers' money, are mere puppets on strings, or perhaps even worse, they're ventricleist puppets. You know, ventricleist, right? They do noises from behind without moving its lips. The puppets in the front would be droning on with the master's speeches. I, for one, have been calling for this cash handout business from day one this year. It's against my usual, my conventional thinking about public spending. Why the change of mind this year? Because we can't see today even. Please don't talk to me about tomorrow. This government, I mean, you can see, on the one hand, they're spending billions and billions on mega projects, which don't seem to be of any good, basically. And then, on the other, they could be so mean to the lowest strata members of the society. It's all a matter of trust at the end of the day. Years ago, I did a journalistic exercise on this International Year of the Child, a theme promoted by the United Nations. That's when I was a university student. And my conclusion was, if people can't even see through their future in this generation, how could you? how could you talk to them about the next generation? And I got a top mark in the class. And my thinking stays today. Previously, the financial chief simply just elbowed us out as though we're just some empty air. What we were proposing were not in line with the directives he's received from upstairs or up there. But then, he repented. He made amends. Okay, so much for Carrie Lam's so-called, or self-proclaimed, rather, watertight, foolproof administration. Very embarrassing. And earlier, I heard something called Junius Ho criticizing one Democratic member's amendment, urging cutting the spending on buying mainland Chinese water. I mean, on the surface of it, it doesn't make sense. But then we all knew, sitting here, that the Democrats are being outnumbered by all those Beijing toadies, the Beijing loyalists, right? What does it matter to you anyway? Will that amendment ever get passed at all? What are you so worried about? Oh, he would say, I'm talking about logic. No, there's no logic here as such. Because we can't say we increase certain spending. We can only suggest the cutting or cutting down of it. So we need to have this amendment to demonstrate to the public once again how ludicrous this entire water deal with Guangdong authorities is. How unfair it is. How many billions, I don't know how much really, gallons of water we had to pour out back to the sea from Hong Kong reservoirs because we pay too much, because we buy too much every single year in at least the last ten years. And I need to give you another example from previous years. Those Beijing toadies kept attacking Long Hare once for trying to cut firemen's pay. Oh, how wrong, how abominable such a suggestion. When Long Hare kept explaining he needed to have that amendment in order to demonstrate Hong Kong firemen's pay plight, their perks plight, their career plight. They wouldn't do that. They're very good at twisting, at blackening whatever good motives you've got for serving Hong Kong people. I have one last point, the last, but certainly not the least. And that is about government spending on animal. I don't know. You have to fill out the blank. You would say animal welfare or animal rights? No, there's no such vocabulary, really, within that administration. They keep talking about pets. But then let's go back. When even Carrie Lam, standing over there, would publicly, but verbally, huh, acknowledge that in Hong Kong, yes, we look after the rights and welfare of animals, not pets. Let's do something about it. Please stop just paying lip service. When our public hygiene, no, public health and food hygiene chief would post online a photo of herself carrying, hugging a puppy. And then with, well, complete with this hashtag that animal abuse, shame, exclamation marks. I wish this government would genuinely take action. It would genuinely rethink public spending on excluding murdering animals in Hong Kong. I'm very saddened by the way some members here, well, the Beijing toadies mainly, right, would talk about the sums of the money. They would say some sums are so big and some sums are so small. If they're small, they're negligible. Let's just get it passed. One million dollars in government spending, just one drop in the Pacific. And this one million dollars is used to, they call mercifully kill, to euthanize Hong Kong animals. Why do they need to be put down? Because they couldn't be adopted. Nobody wanted them. Is that really true? Not really. Because half of our population live in public housing estates. And public housing estates are not allowed to keep dogs to start with. How about that? And in the meantime, they wouldn't even agree with cutting one million dollars of all these animal murders. So what are they talking about? They did say that three hundred million as subsidy for the Ocean Park is such a tiny sum. It's negligible. So guys, don't vote against it. All these double standards. And the government should certainly think twice about all this public spending. Three hundred millions, not a small sum, they say, I know, sorry. They say it is a very small sum, but it's so small, why didn't you just forget about it? Three million dollars for the Ocean Park. Partly, it's going to expand our favorite client countries or that, well, targets, i.e. mainland China markets. And some of it, they didn't actually tell you very clearly how much is spent, it's going to be spent on what. But then, it certainly will also be spent on animal shows at the Ocean Park. Animal shows, animal slavery. Please stop that. Thank you.
Mister Jimmy, thank you, Chairman.